Welcome to Radio Simi. I'm your co-state agent Denert.
And I'm your host, Aaliyah Ewing. This week, we'll be interviewing City Councilmember Ruth Lewanos, going over latest news and more Simi Valley updates.
Remember, if you have any ideas, suggestions, or you just want to come on our show, reach out to us at tiny.cc/radiosimi-form.
Since we missed last week's recording, we have a lot we're gonna try and squeeze in this episode, so bear with us. And if you have any feedback, you can give us a review on Apple Podcasts. Here's what's going on in Simi Valley and the greater area.
On February 1st, the Park District and the Historical Society agree that the sale or use of the Confederate flag on Park District property would be eliminated except for strict reenactment purposes. On February 17th, the Special Needs Committee at the Park Board will meet at 3:30 PM. Public comment is being encouraged. Radio Simi was recently featured on the Acorn in an article titled "The Dynamic Duo."
I want to give a huge shout out to the Santa Susana Ethics Bowl team who competed this morning. Ethics Bowl has touched a large part of our Radio Simi team, including our Director of Social Media, Hara Alamara, and our writer, Isabella Vogelar, as well as the second person we interviewed, Andrew Young. The four of us were in Ethics Bowl last year, and today, Hara and Bella, along with the rest of their team members, Kyori, Jocelyn, and TJ, competed and won two out of their three rounds. Congratulations to the Santa Susana Ethics Bowl team.
Here's your COVID-19 update. The adult ICU availability has increased to 13.2%, with an increase of 64% of available ventilators. Five people have died in the last three days in Ventura County from COVID-related illnesses, and 334 people have tested positive.
Happy birthday to my favorite high school teacher, Mr. McAllister. Also, happy birthday to my friends Jacob Balkin and Jackson Martinez. If you want to give your friend a birthday shout-out, contact us at tiny.cc/radiosimi-form. Here's what's going on today in local politics. I was contacted today from somebody involved in SVUSD because they wanted to share some information while remaining anonymous. They're concerned because on Monday, teachers were told the State Board of Education is going to resume requiring students to do standardized state testing. As I'm sure some people remember, last year's state testing was suspended because of COVID-19. But despite the majority of schools in California being virtual like they were last year, students are still expected to take a standardized state test. Due to COVID-19, SVUSD has transitioned where students take two classes every six weeks before moving on to other subjects. For example, in the first six weeks, students could be taking math and history. The second set of six weeks, they'd be taking English and science. The third set, PE, or health, etc. Based off the many conversations I've had with teachers today, six weeks is not enough time to thoroughly teach a subject. Because of this, teachers have only been teaching the essential standards. These standards are information that are cross-curricular, meaning that students will need it in another class, as well as essential standards that will carry on to future grades, like, for example, how you need algebra to do calculus. This means that the state sanitized test will be covering information that our students did not learn. According to a study done at Harvard, health consequences associated with standardized testing include stomachaches, vomiting, headaches, sleep problems, depression, attendance problems, and acting out. According to my own school, American University, a one-size-fits-all approach to testing is arguably biased because it fails to account for variables such as language deficiencies, learning disabilities, difficult home lives, or varying knowledge of US cultural conventions. AU also states standardized testing negatively impacts teachers. Teachers have expressed frustration about the time it takes to prepare for and administer tests. They also feel excessive pressure from their schools and administrators. In summary, standardized tests hurt our students and our teachers. However, some people disagree. They believe that standardized tests can help because it's just meant to collect data and does not affect the students whatsoever. It's important to mention, though, that teachers are legally allowed to make it grade-based. Some teachers at Simi High grade students based on their results on the state test. If virtual, the data collected will not entirely be accurate because of at-home distractions and the pandemic. When the students don't score well, it not only makes our school look bad, which decreases enrollment, it also lowers the property value of the homes surrounding the schools, so it hurts homeowners as well. Unfortunately, when the state mandates it, the school board has to enforce it. Also unfortunately, our state is required to give out sanitized tests in order to receive federal funding. This means none of us really have a choice in the matter. What we can do, though, is attend the next school board meeting and share our thoughts on standardized tests with them. We then ask that they put pressure on the state to reverse their decision because the state does have another option. California does not need to require state testing because we can apply for a waiver from the federal government due to COVID-19. This is the same waiver that California filled out last year when we suspended it. Keeping standardized tests in 2021 will not just negatively impact students, teachers, and homeowners, but it also costs the state millions of dollars paying companies to create and score the tests. Teachers that are administering the test will need to spend their prep hours attending a mandatory training. This is time that teachers could be spending on improving their virtual teaching methods. The millions of dollars we spent on state testing can actually be used to making it so students can go back to school safely by paying for COVID infrastructure like Plexiglas and masks. If we contact the school board and ask them to put pressure on the state to apply for a waiver, we could reverse the decision to make students take standardized tests this year. The next school board meeting is Tuesday, February 16th, at 5:30 PM. To speak to school board members during the meeting, you can email them at tania.bishop@simivalleyusd.org before 2:00 PM the day before. That's T-A-N-I-A dot B-I-S-H-O-P at simivalleyusd.org. So before 2:00 PM on February 15th, you can email them and request to speak. They'll send you a link and then call you, and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you want to remain anonymous or can't call in, you can email tania.bishop@simivalleyusd.org, which is the same email as before, before 2:00 PM the day of the meeting, so the 16th, and share your discontent there. Now, if you don't want to do either, you can always opt your child out of state testing. The district won't tell you this because they need 80% of students to take the test, but you can always opt out. You just need to give a note or email to the school counselor or their principal stating you do not wish for your child to take the test. You do not need to provide a reason, and you should put this on file as soon as possible. For more information, you can go to the school board's website at simivalleyusd.org/BoardVideos. Next, we'll be interviewing City Councilwoman Ruth Lewanos.
Thank you so much, Ruth, for joining us.
Of course. Thank you for having me.
So a lot of people, including one of our donors, Kathleen Capella, have been calling for you to run for higher office, like Congress, against Mike Garcia. Do you think this is something that might be in your future?
I can't say it's in my immediate future, but it's definitely crossed my mind. I definitely would love to get back to DC. We were just talking about DC. But I definitely see that the impact that federal and state policies have on local communities, and in the end, that's really what it's about, including, you know, lack of funding to local communities. We've gotten zero federal funding to help local municipalities deal with the pandemic, and yet, we're the ones on the front line dealing with those issues. So in terms of, you know, rent, you know, helping commercial and residential tenants who cannot make rent payments because of COVID, the COVID pandemic, we have gotten, that's come out of our own, you know, municipal coffers. We haven't gotten any help from the federal government with regard to that. And, you know, we've been advocating and advocating for state and federal funding. And yes, I have reached out to our senators and our congressmen and women and saying, "You need to fund municipalities. We need this funding because we are on the front lines. We're the ones who are dealing with the fallout of the COVID pandemic, the economic fallout, the COVID pandemic." And it's hard to keep asking people to shelter in place and, you know, abide with all the health orders when there's such devastating economic impact to these, to our local community. So I definitely see a need for people to advocate on the federal and state level for our local municipalities.
So you have two kids in SVUSD right now. In fact, I'm friends with your daughter. How has your political career affected their day-to-day lives?
Well, you know, when I first ran, we make a lot of decisions together as a family. My kids are old enough now. They're teenagers, both of them in high school, to be a part of this. But even before then, you know, when I decided that, you know, I was gonna go into teaching full-time, when, you know, when I became National Board Certified, these are all strains that, you know, we have, that have impact on our family unit. And when I decided, when I was asked to run, you know, I went to the meeting, and then I came, I tell my husband, "I'm gonna go to this meeting, and this is what it's about." And then when I was asked to run, I sat with my husband and my kids, and I said, "I wanna, I've been asked to do this. What do you guys think?" And my daughter was like, "No." Like, right away, she was like, "No, you're not gonna do this. You're gonna, this takes time away that you spend with me." And my son was like, "If you want to do this, Mom, we support you." My husband's like, "I support you no matter what." And so, you know, it was like a three out of four vote, right? And once my daughter started walking with me, you know, campaigning with me, she came around and she saw the need for someone like me to be a voice, you know, for people who didn't have a voice in our local office. And so she came around, and was like one of the biggest supporters that I had, as big as my husband and my son were. And my mother-in-law wore my, you know, button everywhere, you know, telling everywhere, all of her friends and everywhere she went about me. And so, you know, she has completely done away in eighty. She's like completely supports me. She's the one that's like, "Mom, you need to do this, and Mom, you need to do that," and, you know, planning out my political trajectory. And I think it's amazing to have my daughter support me in that way. And my husband, obviously, and my son and my mother-in-law, my mom and dad, and my sisters, you know, it means so much to me to have their support. But it definitely has had an impact, you know, on our day-to-day lives for them to see me, you know, stressed and, you know, upset and elated and, you know, and they're, they're not afraid. We've always been very open about political dialogue in our household. So they, you know, my son will say, "What's going on?" Or, you know, "I want to know what's happening," you know. You know, and I love that I can have that intellectual conversation with my son and with my daughter, and that they're immersed in that. And, yeah, they worry about me, but, you know, I think because I'm a teacher of 20 years in LA Unified, you know, they worried about me being at school when Sandy Hook happened. You know, they worried about me when the Parkland shooting happened. They worried about, you know, bomb threats and active shooters and, you know, "Is Mom gonna get assaulted by a student today?" You know, at the school that she works at. So it's, it's, it's not that my kids didn't worry about me before, but I think it's, it's a different kind of worry now. But I think they also feel very vested, but they see me doing the things that I've always done, which is to advocate for youth engagements and uplifting voices. And now, I think they're old enough that they feel like they can be active participants in lifting that up, and they've influenced me, you know, in ways that I see things and how it impacts the younger generation. So it definitely has had an impact on both of them, good and bad. And I think it's empowering to them, to both of them, to be a part of this.
You've gone through so much emotionally in the last two years, being on the city council, with, with the threats that you and your family received, with the recall, with just general racism and sexism on the dais. How have you been able to hold it all in emotionally and kind of keep yourself together? Because that's, that's a lot for a single person to go through. How, how have you been, how have you been dealing with all of that emotional stress?
Well, it's, it's hard during a pandemic, you know, because you can't, we're all stuck here together. So, you know, I do Zooms, you know, with other people that are, you know, politically minded, but then there's times when we're just like, "Let's have a movie night. We're gonna, you know, watch a movie, sit down, have some popcorn, you know, and, and just decompress." You know, and it's really important to decompress. My husband is, you know, like my, my biggest supporter and, you know, patience and listening and supporting. And my daughter will see me at times, you know, and see me on the brink of tears, you know, and just come and hug me and support me. And I think that's, my son's the same, you know, they're both very cognizant. And I think we do a disservice when we don't acknowledge the, the, the trauma that our children feel when they see us stressed, and I think that's part of what this pandemic is as well. It's like you can't just escape it. It's, your, your kids are feeling whatever you're feeling as parents, and that trickles down to your kids. So even at least acknowledging that that exists, that what we feel as parents impacts our children, is really powerful to be able to have a safe place to do that is really, really important. But, you know, we, we have a ring, you know, we have security cameras in our house, you know. I have a scout box in my house so that I know that, you know, we can get help if we needed. I have someone who volunteers. He's my Jedi warrior. I call him. He walks, comes to every city council meeting and walks me to my car, and it doesn't matter if it's 11:00 at night or 3:00 in the morning, and I do mean literally 3:00 in the morning. He will walk me to my car. I have other very strong, amazing women of color who have stayed and, you know, allies who have stayed very late to walk me to my car to make sure that I make it home safely. And I think that gives my husband and children a sense of security to know that there are other people that are watching out for me and making sure that I make it home safely. And, you know, my husband's usually on the couch waiting up for me when I get home at whatever hour I do. So it has an impact, but I think, you know, like any other mental health issue that we're all dealing with as parents, like we have to acknowledge it first and then deal with it in, in whatever healthy ways that we can deal with it. Because how we deal with that stress is how our children are going to see, you know, healthy ways of dealing with that stress. And so we have to, you know, I teach art, and I love, like, this week I will teach art all week, and it's, for me, it's like, "I get to teach art." For me, that's one of my outlets. So even just the, the process of engaging in art. But I also do meditation. I do Wellness Wednesdays with my advisory class. So we'll do meditation and yoga, chair yoga with them. So for me, teaching is kind of therapeutic, you know, because I get to do things I really enjoy with my students, and my children see that it brings me joy, and I just, I love what I do.
Out of your entire life, including your political career, what accomplishment are you most proud of?
Oh, gosh. That's really hard. No one's ever asked me that question before. I, you know, I never thought about that one. I, I think, for me, the accomplishment that I'm most proud of is seeing my students graduate. I just connected with a student who was an honors second language learner, undocumented student of mine in seventh and eighth grade, and she graduated from Harvard with a full ride scholarship. Her mother cleaned houses like me. And I think for me, the greatest accomplishment is seeing my students succeed and go on to make impacts in their community. So they're not complacent with saying, "I've succeeded. I've made it." But they're saying, "I'm coming back," like Aaliyah, like you, "to better and improve my community." And that, to me, to, to have my students be not only self-sufficient, but then be advocates for others is like, you know, it's just, it is such a moment of pride. So I can't say, you know, that it's my, you know, my law degree, or, you know, my, that I got my masters, or that I got elected. Like, for me, it's, it is such a source of pride for me to know that my students are going out there and making a difference in the world. It is just that, that's, so I can't say one accomplishment. I can say, you know, it's a lifetime of having been in the classroom and having been a mentor, whether it's through Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts, or, you know, Girls of LA or LA Teamworks, to see these kids come back to me and come back to their communities and make a difference. That is my life's fulfillment, you know, to know that I've made that kind of positive impact and inspired people in that way. It's, it's just amazing. I'm so proud of that.
That's so sweet. In two years, you might be running against contentious city council member, Mike Judge. What are your thoughts so far?
I think there's a huge difference in how we view the term "public servant." And, you know, I take to whole heart what a public servant is, and that involves the sacrifices, compromises. It means service to the public, to those who agree with you and disagree with you. That's what it entails to me, and I've, I've always believed that. Obviously, I wouldn't be a public school teacher if I didn't believe that, and I've carried that over into, you know, public office. But also, I have a vision, you know, I have, I have hope for a future that improves the community for everyone in Simi Valley, and I've yet to see that, you know, from, you know, from, from Councilmember Judge. I would love to say that I saw a greater vision, but I just see people looking in the rearview mirror and saying, you know, "I wish it was like this, you know, how it was 50 years ago or 20 years ago." And that, that doesn't improve our future in any way. We need to address the issues that we have to deal with now and prepare for the future that we need to contend with, with, in terms of our economics, our environment, you know, the cleanup of Santa Susana Field Lab, our transportation needs, global warming, you know, climate change, these PSPS events. We have to address those issues, and we can't sit here in hindsight, you know, in 10 years and say, "Well, I wish it was like, you know, how it was 20 years ago." That doesn't get us anywhere. So I think there's a big difference in how we view things. I, I, I'm looking on the dashboard. I'm looking towards the future, and I see, you know, that he's still looking in the past, and that's, that doesn't help us.
What would you say is the number one issue facing Simi Valley right now?
I think it's, it's, it's the perception of our city. I think we have to change the perception of our city because we are not going to succeed if we continue with the perception of being exclusive, of not being forward-thinking in terms of implementation of infrastructure, technology. I mean, when people drive through our city, there's a perception that they have of our city. When people live in our city, when they do business in our city, there's a certain perception of it. And unfortunately, you know, we, we have not worked towards dispelling that perception, whether it's economic, political, social. You know, we have to do better and work harder and be more inclusive and work towards a, a grander scheme of things and take a step back and look at the bigger picture. It has to be a "we," not a "me." It has to be an "us," not an "us versus them." It has to be a community that lifts everyone up together, and if we do that, then we will all be successful. And, and I think that's, you know, that's what, that's what needs to change. I talk about, one of the conferences I went to, they talked about a city back east that was known for having hung an elephant who was there for, during a circus event, and the elephant ran over a woman and killed her, and so the punishment was to hang the elephant. And forever, that was the reputation of that, you know, that small town, until someone turned around and turned it into, "Well, now we love elephants, and they have big elephant parades and elephant things, and, you know, we're sorry for what we did." So they confronted their past, acknowledged it, and then said, "Here's how we're gonna do better." And now that community is thriving, you know. People are going there for the, you know, elephant parade, and, you know, they're, they are, they have changed the perception of the city in such a way that has made it positive for everybody. And when, you know, the community succeeds and businesses succeed, and, you know, there's more funding for schools and infrastructure and all those things. So I think that, for me, it, it has to be that shift because then that impacts everything else in the community.
I completely agree with you. What advice would you give someone who wants to pursue a political career in Simi Valley?
Step up. Do it, you know. I, I'm here to offer support and help and advice, and, you know, I, I think we need more political engagement, more civic engagement. I've always been a huge proponent of civic engagement, especially of our youth, but anyone who wants to, you know, step up and be engaged, do it. You know, this is your community. This is your future. We still live in a republic, you know, so we represent the people. And the more engaged people are, then the better outcomes we have. So, you know, the more people want to run, do it, you know. I'm happy to, you know, let you know how, you know, how to gather supporters and fill out forums and stuff like that. And it's not a secret, nor should it be. Anyone who wants to participate should be able to do so and be a part of this process. And the more participation we have, the better, the better outcome we have because then more people are aware of the issues that are confronting the community and how to address those issues. And so, you know, run. Do it.
Awesome. I'll definitely talk to you once I graduate.
Absolutely, Dayton.
Yeah, I'm majoring in environmental engineering, so hopefully I could take that to you waterboard.
Yay! We need more environmental engineers. Yay!
Is there, is there anything else you want to say that, like, maybe we didn't go over?
No, just, you know, I know we have a new president, but that, and a new vice president, but we still have issues that we need to confront. And getting a new president, vice president, you know, does, to a certain extent, impact us locally, but we still have local issues that we need to tackle. Local and regional issues that we need to deal with in the middle of this pandemic, in the middle of this economic downturn, in the middle of, you know, the final acknowledgement of all the racial injustice that we have in our communities, in our region, in our state, in our country, in our political, economic, and social systems. And so we still have work to do, and I just ask everyone to keep an open ear, keep an open mind, keep an open heart. You know, when we listen to each other and lift each other up, it only strengthens our community. And, and like I said, improves outcomes for everybody, and that is our goal, you know, to make sure that everyone is uplifted. So I know these are tense times for, you know, some people think, "Oh, well, we won." And it's like, "No, we still have a lot of work to do." But that doesn't mean that people aren't willing to step up. And thank you, Radio Simi, for having me, Aaliyah, and Dayton for starting this show. I'm so inspired by all the youth that have stepped up in Simi Valley. And I know when I say youth, people think like high school students. I'm like, "No, these are like college students and college graduates, and you guys are, like, give me so much hope for the future that you guys are doing this and putting this together and, and, you know, giving yourselves your time and energy to put these things together." So thank you so much for bringing this awareness of all these community issues. I applaud you both. Thank you very much, and thank you for having me.
Thank you so much for joining us and for all your kind words.
Thank you.
Here's an update on crime in Simi Valley brought to you by Linnea Chandler.
Hi, I'm Linnea Chandler, and I'll be reporting on local crime and crime-related news happening in Simi Valley. With the current state of our nation and national police policies, our Simi Valley Police Department and Chief Mr. David Livingston will be holding a public forum for members of our community to learn about all aspects of policing, as well as how to go about reporting a police officer if needed. Attendees will also have the opportunity to ask questions and provide ideas and suggestions. We highly encourage everyone to attend this virtual event that will also be broadcasted in Spanish as well as English. This event is meant to bridge the gap of communication between regular police officers and citizens. This event is said to take place quarterly. For information about time and the URL link, you can find it at simivalleyacorn.com and the Simi Valley Police Department's official website.
This is a trigger warning. Linnea will be mentioning pedophilia and sexual assault for the next few minutes. If you would like to skip ahead, please move to the 28 minutes and 22-second mark.
In other news, former lacrosse coach at Simi Valley High School was ordered to stand trial in a child sex crime case. This coach was accused of multiple accounts of felony child learning to engage in sexual activities with underage minors, as well as multiple accounts of possession of child pornography. This man has pleaded not guilty, however, at the end of his preliminary hearing in Ventura County Superior Court, Judge Ryan Wright found that there was sufficient evidence to declare him guilty. This investigation began in December of 2019 when a 14-year-old male student made his parents aware of a sexual encounter with the suspect before a football game in the suspect's own classroom. There was also surveillance footage to corroborate the witness's statement validating the time the student entered and exited the classroom. If you or a loved one are in need of support due to sexual assault, there are some excellent resources for you to contact, such as the National Sexual Assault Hotline Confidential 24/7 Support, which you can find at rain.org, that is spelled R-A-I-N-N dot org, as well as the National Sexual Violence Resource Center, which you can find at nsvrc.org.
This song, called "Finding Utopia," is brought to you by Murmur.
Good afternoon, Radio Simi. This is Murmur. My name is Matt. I am actually a 32-year-old rapper, MC, who was adopted from Guatemala and lived in the Bay Area until I was 16, where I live down here, and, and I experienced a bunch of racism. However, I've been able to overcome that. I've overcome abuse and neglect, a bunch of other various forms of human indecency, I shall say. But I'm here to prevail and show that anyone that goes through traumatic situations, if we have mental disorders, that we are able to still live a life. And I encourage everybody to embrace your inner, your inner feelings and your inner emotions and not run from them, as they will always catch up to you. And as always, stay safe. Much love.
Thank you so much for listening to episode six of Radio Simi. Follow us on Facebook and Instagram at Radio Simi and on Twitter at RealRadioSimi. Remember, if you want us to play your song, share your story, or feature your graphic art, reach out to us at tania.cc/radiosimiform. If you can, please leave us a review on Apple Podcasts and subscribe to our YouTube channel. Thank you so much and Happy New Year.